He is not going to be here today. Melinda is still. Okay. Pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Well, she's, she had our times changed to 3:15 when we voted on that the last year. She's just not here yet. I presume she's on her way out.
Because we haven't met now so that she can just get there.
Yeah.
I see.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Behrens?
Present.
Mr. Christensen.
Mr. President.
Mr. Brerick?
Here.
Mr. Godbout?
Here.
Ms. Lotner is absent today. Mr. Noonan is absent today. Mr. Popa?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Ehren is absent today. And Mr. Walter?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Public comment. We'll move through that.
Did you approve of the agenda?
No, I'm getting to it right now. So any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Move to approve. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda.
Ignore the first one, sorry. Oh, no, I had the one key.
Oh, that's why I got confused. So we have a number of minutes to approve. First, those from December 7th.
Everyone should have guessed who sent this separate email.
You did.
Yeah.
I think you did a fine job.
Thank you, Laurie.
What's that?
Thank you for doing the minutes.
You're very welcome. Pleasure.
Do we want a motion on each one of these? December 7th?
I make motion to approve.
Right here, a second. We have a motion to approve the minutes from December 7th.
Second.
All in favor? Now, the January 4th organizational session.
Make a motion to approve January 4th, 2023 organizational session.
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
January 4th, regular session.
To approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve January 4th, regular session.
Support.
Support.
Discussion on that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Financials. We were approved for $190,000 this year. And we spent $6,600 so far. Majority of that was, get up sale was $4,600 hours.
Yeah, it looks like capital outlay is 55. Am I missing a shit here? 45 if you look. Oh, no. It's not here, but, yeah, it's, it's been 45. It's been 45 right along and we're up to 55. And that, that includes $10,000 to replace dock sections. And the sideline parking improvement. Well, actually not. Yes, it is, it is. We all got, yeah.
Are you sure it was dock section? Because I thought, we, we talked about docks and Scott came saying, we don't need docks, docks are okay.
Did you drop it out?
Something else.
Yeah, it's the entrance to the dock and the shoreline.
There were sideline improvements. Sideline parking is 10 also. So when, when we're into it, we might be able to look at, say, the stairway instead of the dock. Because Scott says that's more important at this point, so if there's money there.
The approach to the dock, that's a huge issue.
What about the?
It's at, it's at the base of the stairs where it attaches to the dock and it's all rotted away, washed out. So we have to repair that, but that's about the only thing that needs to be repaired on the stairs.
The stairway is still solid.
Well, we could, maybe I'll meet you there, we'll look at it and see what kind of permits we would need for that, at the base. Might need an eagle permit. We'll see if we can avoid it. Little creative engineering there, okay.
I don't think it's much of a change.
Essentially, that base thing that it's sitting on is already, is sloping down towards the lake.
Yeah, we had, we had money in for the park plan design at Miles. We had money in for the standalone kiosk at Miles. We had old settlers. We had 10 for the dock sections and $10,000 for the sideline parking improvements. So we should probably have a meeting and get the ball rolling on that, maybe. Veronica Valley, 15 portable toilets with enclosure, including ADA access, there's 15 grand there. Curry restoration, 2 grand. Wildlife viewing platform, 5 grand. Total estimated capital outlay, 54.5, we're at 55, so. So we have, we have some money to spend and the committees can pull the trigger and get the ball rolling, I guess. Just saying.
From what you've seen of the gazebo at picnic grounds, is that going to take a capital project to do or? Well, it's paint and scrape and paint and I don't know what else it needs.
Yeah. That would be what you're on business.
And we've got $30,000 in that account. As long as the Kubotas don't.
That doesn't keep culture apart sometimes. We're paying $5 bucks for a pole.
Don't mess around with those Kubotas. Keep them, keep them nice.
Is our budget, $190,000, that's an increase. Any other questions on the financials?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oh, you know what? Item B.
Well, that's a separate thing.
Oh, I see. We did A. Okay.
So B is simply a repeat from last year in that, for those who are new, the enterprise will typically reach out to, how we see, and say, hey, you recognize in the special section.
We need to know next week.
We need to know now. So if we approve this ahead of time, I have quoted this on page 14 of what we would be committed to.
And then the, the color glossy is what goes in. We've tweaked it each of the last two years. And I think, I think we're pretty accurate with what we have there now.
The highlight of it is, is if we commit to this, we will be eligible for the early bird discount. $50 off for the visitor's guide, the visitor guide, the color tour. But we wanted to review the footage on the ad, which is an inch or two. If you want, I think it was adjusted last year. If you need some further adjusting, you would have to let me know. But visitors' guides will come out this summer, so we've got lots of time to work on that. It would be good to have a motion approving advertising for the enterprise and you can worry about the footage later.
I make that motion for Leonard dated January 4th, 23, 11 Ruder, Koloral Evans.
Any discussion, any further discussion on that?
I think it's good advertising. We don't advertise a whole lot for the, for the parks and the people that are coming in. Those two items are everywhere, you know, at every grocery store and just about anywhere they want to be, there it is. You know, it's a visitor's guide and it's, the color tour is later in the year and, and there are inserts in the enterprise and the enterprise goes everywhere. I think it's a pretty amazing amount of advertising that we get for that kind of money. Myself, I don't know.
Thanks, Laurel, for giving that information.
The only thing I'd like to mention, I think I mentioned it last year too, we talked about pictures for the spring edition, we have the spring pictures and in the fall, we have more fall pictures. I think it'd be nice, I don't know if it costs more to do that or not, probably not that much probably, but I think that would be a desirable thing to do. Because I think if we use the spring ones in the fall, it's just, it's not tacky, it looks fine. I really like it with the layout and everything. I like that we had signed out and.
So we need fall pictures.
If we're going to spend the money, why not do it right?
Well, we won't have fall pictures by the time the fall thing is printed, however.
Or, yeah, Scott might have some, yeah. We have something.
I took some today.
They're not subject, suitable for publishing?
Let me, I think we've got some. I think we've got some field day, fifth grade field day pictures.
Be cute.
I'll look, I, I may have one or two that would be appropriate. Well, all in favor of the motion that we authorize this expense as per the letter that Laurel's presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Well, committee reports and recommendations. Miles Kimmerly.
Miles Kimmerly Committee met just before this meeting. We talked about updating our master plan for Miles Kimmerly Park and we're still working on that. We have a follow-up meeting before the next meeting, we'll give you a report about that. We looked at all the different projects we have to do at Miles Kimmerly and we don't have any money for, but we'd like to prioritize what's the most important thing to do. We looked over timeline, what things have been on the pipeline for longer than other ones. Infrastructure seemed to be an important thing, bathrooms, parking, things like that. What else? Oh, we've learned that the Pavleek Trail that we'd really like to see out at Miles Kimmerly, it's still in flux and we had a capital output or whatever you call it.
Request.
Capital request of $190,000 put in, but that was turned down, we understand. So for, it didn't qualify for, for whatever reason. And we're disappointed about that, but we'll go from there and carry on. Thank you.
Well, let's say it, it just wasn't budgeted, which I knew I wasn't going to get it in the budget. But I keep hammering that if we can find the money, I want us to dedicate it to this project. At least $100,000 to get it going. So it, it's going to boil down to probably if the county has awarded more of the federal.
ARPA money.
Yeah, funding money or ARPA money. If, if we are, and then we can finish paying off the broadband or the fiber project and get the H-back going, I think that would be next in line. We have a new board. That I think may be. Yes, maybe receptive. So I just want to put that, it wasn't budgeted, correct, but we haven't forgotten it either.
I will, just to follow up on that, I, I think money spent on parks is important because it touches a lot of people, touches a lot of people in the community, people that don't have as much income as some others might have. And it sends a message. And a lot of people, if you were to tell them, well, your, your tax dollars are going for parks, they don't mind paying their taxes as much as if you told them your park dollars or your tax dollars are going for something else.
This project would be so great for that area of the county. As I keep, and, and we've said, we've seen it on, on social media before, people are like, oh, wouldn't a walking path be great at Miles Kimmerly? And it would just be fantastic. So just for the, the health of the county, it would be heavily used, it would be very good. So, yeah, I'm in, I've been in favor of it since its inception, so I will certainly continue to support it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Don?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any report from old settlers?
We really have, we have not met.
No, we need to set that meeting.
We will set that date today. As soon as the meeting's done, we'll set a date to talk about some stuff.
Well, Veronica has not had a meeting for this month. It's the first of the month, but we didn't get one in. We're meeting next week. Coming out of last, the last full Parks and Rec Commission meeting, if you recall, much of the discussion was about the beaver. I got hold of Don right away and he was anxious to get going right away. Yeah, but he hasn't been in there yet. I talked to him two nights ago and he said, oh, he got busy and some other project came along. So at this point, there's been no change.
Is this Ron the Trapper?
No. Ron, Ron was due for surgery. This was Don Clark.
Oh, Don.
John Pope had put me onto him, I talked to Don. He was enthused, seemingly quite enthused about getting in there right away, because he said he had a project going with his granddaughter and he needed two pelts. But as of two days ago, he had not made any effort to get in. So another whole month's gone by. Part of that plan was for Don and Scott to knock heads, because Don said, I'll show him where and how much of one of the dams to pull apart so that he could concentrate his trapping right there. But none of that's happened. I have not, since learning that, I haven't attempted to call Trapper Ron again. Now, the season goes on into the spring. Don indicated that was his understanding and that he still has some intention of getting in there. Trapper Ron may, but I don't know about his recovery. I don't, I don't know at this moment. Scott, you've seen the, the situation over there, more.
It's not getting any better.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Pond's getting bigger. It's quite a flow. Going between the river and Shipwreck Pond.
Is there a chance that you can get on the lower dam? The one that's on, the one that you and I saw that was bigger, I mean with the Kubota? It wasn't.
Yeah. I hope so. I think I'll go back on the Shipwreck Pond.
Is that going to be easier if the weather does do what we think it's going to do, warm up again?
Yeah. A lot smaller, you have more trash.
Is that flow between the pond and the river in the way? Can you go through it?
You can go through it, yeah, that's on.
Oh, okay. Have they?
You wouldn't want to walk through it, skis.
Yeah. Have the beavers started the dike that was there to you?
To higher.
They scooped out that space that's flowing now? Before, built up a dike that started on that?
We're foraging for food closer to the highway. There must be a lock button somewhere.
Well.
Does Don know how urgent this is?
We'll give him a call after this meeting.
I didn't express that to him because he expressed to me how urgent it was for him to get in there. And that was the evening of the meeting we had in January, because we came out of this and I knew that that's something we had to do, get on right away. He acknowledged that you had left a message, et cetera, but he hadn't gotten back to you. No?
He operates by call and remind me. It's just, it's just lawful for everything.
Has Al got a hold of you about going in and helping with that?
Who?
Al.
Zalinski?
Yes.
Well, actually, Don Clark said that he was going to recruit Al.
Okay.
To go in with him, but he didn't give me any timeframe.
Okay.
We'll see.
Are you going to call him or shall I?
We'll be right here in the gathering.
Well, oh, you mean right after the meeting?
Sure.
One of the things that will be coming along is decisions about, well, first, I have had a long conversation with Lonnie Roddemaker relative to the letter that we reviewed at the last meeting. We have responded to that with a letter saying, yes, we want to work with them, utilize their expertise, their assistance in any way that we can. He indicated there's a committee, and you may know a little more of this, is a committee, I think specifically set up to outreach to all the various possible external sources of weeds, so including Veronica. That's headed up by a woman named Sue Downs. I had a long conversation with her. She's not a winter resident, she lives in San Diego during the winter. But we had a good conversation. She has sent me, I have not yet looked at this, she's sent me several sources for signage. I believe one thing that we certainly should consider at Veronica is that kind of signage that tells fishermen, don't leave here with any, any shard of vegetation hanging onto your fish hooks. You know, make sure your stuff is clean. Keep anything that, that has come out of the ponds, on your boots, whatever, at Veronica, keep it at Veronica. She's supplied us with a couple of different sources for that kind of signage already made up that I'll look at. But Savin Lake Services has already contacted us, given us an outline of various levels of service. They still are outlining the package that we've engaged them in before, which is roughly $2,500 bucks for up to two sprays. The issue there is that I would really like their techies to do a walk-around with me with Ron Reinick, the techie from the Lake Association. The problem is we can't see a whole lot of growth until the weather's fairly, the water temperatures are fairly warm. And yet, we got to make some decisions then real quickly about, about spray or no spray before Fish Day. That's all going to get jammed up on us in, in May. I have yet to get back to Savin. I suspect that we, I, I need to learn the detail of permits that are required and the fees involved. I think we have to make a decision about spending some money in March to get the permit applications, the processing underway, so that they're done and received in time for sure for spraying if, if required, which I think it probably will be, but some spraying before Kids Fish Day. We have a meeting scheduled, the committee does, for March already. This will be material we present to this group in March, more detail on that. But I, I expect in terms of our expenses, we're going to be looking at $2,500 bucks again for, for their services, because I think, I think given what happened last year, we're going to need the spray this year.
Did they look at the ponds later in the season?
They being Savin, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, okay.
I mean, we did, they, they came twice last year.
So they have a good idea what they need to do.
I had a pretty long conversation with Annalise and, yeah, yeah, she, they're on top of it.
Well, they didn't treat last year, no.
But they looked at it.
Who, who, who's Annalise?
Annalise Pobolo is the director at L-L-L-N.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, working, yeah, she's the one who looked at your pond and found.
We need a mic for Cam.
Oh.
Here, here, use this one, Don, you use this one.
Yeah, I'm going to be at the next stewardship meeting you referred to, so I'll join that committee too.
That's the Lake Cleveland?
Lake Association Stewardship Committee, which is the one who's kind of doing the educational outreach.
I suggested to Sue Downs that they have a educational booth at Kids Fish Day. After all, it's a huge crowd. We ought to begin the educational program right there with those folks in terms of making sure you're clean, your tackle's clean, your boots are clean.
They didn't have that? At the last one?
I am not aware of.
I don't think they had anything that had to do with invasive species. They had other educational booths there, but I don't think there was one that had that kind of material on it.
I don't remember seeing it.
We've never had any signage, you know, about.
It's a good idea.
Being clean. But I know that's something we can do, should do, regardless of how some of the rest of this shakes out.
Have to think of a slogan, right? Think of a catchy slogan, you know, about hooks.
I'll see what's on the, on the marketplace so we don't have to write up our own original. Sue indicated, and again, I've seen the email from her with, with links to several places where that kind of signage is available, but I haven't looked at the choices yet. Steve, did you start to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say the bait dumping is, I think, a big one. Of course, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know as much contact as I used to, but, you know, dumping excess bait in the trash versus dumping it anywhere else is important. And in that group, you know, it's bait fishing for panfish. Leftover bait needs to go somewhere else rather than in the pond or in the lake.
All bait?
Well, you know, you're, you were talking about your hooks and you're, you're baiting, you're hooking, you're baiting, you're hooking, you're right over the bait bucket. You know, if there's going to be a piece or a shard, it's going to not just be on your hook, it's going to be in your bait bucket. Isn't it? I don't know.
Well, I know there's concern about Canadian crawlers being dumped along streams and et cetera, and how they're changing the leaf cover in forests. They're so aggressive on eating fallen leaves.
Yeah. Really?
Yeah, they're not native, or not, we don't have any native that we want, yeah.
Perils, period.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay, well, I hadn't thought about that, so I'll look at that kind of signage as well.
I'm aware of the goldfish problem getting into ponds, but you're talking about other bait fishing.
Yeah.
You're talking about other bait fishing, some minnows of some sort that shouldn't be-
Yeah, any bait, actually, any bait, if you're if you're using bait and you're hooking and baiting and right over your bait bucket, you're gonna have pieces of milfoil in your bait bucket, whether it's a minnow bucket or a can of worms.
Should we talk with our supplier, the fish farm, about providing bait minnows to be stocked at the same time? And should we feed our stocked fish? There are schools of minnows in the pond, but not extensive. This was brought up two years ago when I was there, when we, when we put fish in the pond. And I don't remember if it was someone from Laggas or, is that the name of the fish farm? Laggas, yeah.
That's a Heather question. That's a Heather question, yeah, yeah.
She historically leads with everyone in April. Do you want to remain on that schedule? Because I'm updating-
Definitely.
Well, I'll contact her right now just to get it on her calendar. But April's meeting is when we'd like to have her review. Oh, that's the date? I, okay. Steve, Scott, John and John, anything?
We haven't had the meetings, we don't have any-
Meetings? Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
I was talking to Scott about the outfall of Kids' Fish Pond, and it looks to be running. I didn't know if it'd been rattle-rooted, and Scott said, well, since the log got pulled out of it, it's been functional.
I gotta check it and see.
At one point, the water was quite a bit over the platform.
I couldn't hit the pond and know it was due later, so. Don't worry.
Watch out for that turtle.
Probably what happened last week.
Do you know where the intake end of the overflow pipe is?
Close, close.
Okay, okay. I've never seen it, I've never been able to spot it, the water. I don't suppose we've done anything, well, you rolled snow, the blizzard snow we had in December. You haven't done anything else out there?
I rolled, sprained. It's blocked, it's late, and I tasked with doing something else.
Simply roll it again, or will you-
No, you can't.
I wouldn't think so. Wouldn't think so. And if we warm up, it won't be any point, you'll peel it right off.
There's very small.
Yeah, okay.
Talk about that.
Well, that's all I've got from Veronica at this moment. Now, Laurel has provided us with bylaws. Could you-
I had a couple of questions.
Please.
Laurel, on Section 2.21B. Okay, it says arrange for county staff to act as a recording secretary in recording take minutes. And we've never been successful getting county staff to do that, so we-
Technically, a temporary office is supposed to be county staff.
Okay. So do you think that's worded properly? I mean, is that-
She is, well, she's employed by us, so she's-
Okay. Considered temp? What did he say?
Well, by keeping it somewhat generically worded, it just helps with whoever we put in there. It will be someone who's employed by a county.
Or contracted, I guess that's where I was going, is-
We always change our bylaws every time.
I know we could, I just, you know, that just doesn't really reflect what we have to do, because kind of sore subject that everybody else gets minutes, but we don't get minutes, you know? So we have to, we cover those, right? Out of our budget. So, okay, well, that's just something to think about. I just had a couple other ones.
For an example, you will this communication. Or when we proceeded this, and I got to worry because Veronica Valley will be holding property at fairly short end next week, and I said, I can pay those, and then for them, I'm the employee.
Yeah.
So county staff is like a good run.
Okay, if it works, it works. And then on 3, 2.3 duties, so just the next, very next page. Is this properly worded? And to, it is one of our duties, I guess, it's a duty, to acquire property in the name of the county. Gifts, bequests, grants, in aid contributions, inappropriate money, and personal property subject to procedures established by inspection and acceptance of the property. But really, we can't do any of that at all without Board of Commissioners to even accept those donations and grants.
My opinion for this would be that was probably something drafted in the original bylaws, and maybe council had added that to it. It was long before I was really involved too much with this board, so what we could do is maybe bump these back to council for review, but there's any other idols that you-
Really, nothing else major. The only other thing I wanted to ask about is if in Section, well, let's see, it would be Article 8. Section 8.2, we have, the commission may designate County Parks Recreation and Volunteer Coordinator to oversee Parks and Recreation activity. So if that just says "may," it means we may, we don't have to. It's not shell, so normally is that Scott? Or is that, you know, chairman will do it, or one of us will do it, if that's all part of that?
I don't think anyone's ever been designated as the coordinator.
I couldn't think of. Okay. Except perhaps yourself wouldn't like to do the building, or did Scott oversee the construction of the new playground over at Old Settler's Say?
We are, give a list. Links to the properties.
Okay, but you're a staff, but you kind of oversaw that, is where- Okay. All right, that's it. Otherwise, I think they're in fine order.
So you're good with that language, then?
Yeah, as long as- The only thing I maybe, so that nobody misunderstands, the second one I mentioned, that if somebody walked in today and Steve's like, I wanna donate to you guys 10 acres for a park, we can't accept that. That would have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners to accept. And that's why, I don't know if that's clear. Gifts and donations and, I gotta find it again. As long as they're okay with it, I'm-
Actually, that's not clear to me, based on the discussion.
If you review Section 2.2, the Parks and Recreation, which of course recommends to the County Board of Commissioners, then shall cooperate. Maybe we can just get it in there as a recommended body, and that way the law states-
But for C, I would, instead of saying to acquire property, to recommend the acquisition of property.
We certainly-
Yeah.
These are a little piecemeal. I can address this in an email to council review and offer the concerns of the commission and be a little more specific on just how much authority we have. That's the mission.
Because I mean, acquire is a much stronger word than recommending the acquisition of.
Right, I agree, too. So, yeah, and you know, we can, it probably has been a long time since these have been reviewed. Probably, so it might not be a bad idea. I think it falls under our contract with them anyway, doesn't it, Laurel? It's not gonna cost anything more, it's not gonna cost us anything to do them done.
We have also a retainer that's called-
Retainer, there we go. Okay. That was all.
Anything else? Charlie?
Is there anything we've forgotten? You know, is there anything we do, the only we really don't have in here either, I mean, it's our kind of our bylaws, is we have our subcommittees, and we've had them for years, and that's really not covered.
So we ask them to add a new structure?
Possibly, I mean, we've been using it, if we wanna continue it, it's a- I was just trying to think of anything that we do that is not in here, you know, what's evolved. And that's the only thing I can think of that's really evolved.
I'm gonna say that happened in 16, because it was the last year that-
Greg Julian. Greg Julian.
So six years, six full years?
There is, Section 6.5 addresses committees, doesn't address our three committee. So perhaps that it'd be a place to make an addition or rewrite.
Well, it says the only standing committees are-
The first paragraph does say, you know, the only other standing committees are
Says it.
the three subcommittees. Right, so it's already included there.
I'm sorry, where is that?
Well, it does, I guess-
6.5, the first paragraph. At the end of it, it says, the only standing committees are the Miles-Kimmerly Park Committee, the Old Settlers Park Committee, and the Veronica Valley Park Stereo Committee.
It might be enough, I guess.
Mentioned the committees as part of the structure.
It just doesn't say what they do, I guess, but maybe that's covered someplace else. Basically, to make recommendations to the full board. Full Parks Board.
I went right over there.
I can prepare a red line doc and send it out to everybody before I send it to council. Or I can give the money for the outs, you know, the red line documents. I'll give an ending that I need to stop.
I have nothing else on our bylaws at this point. Anyone else?
Do you need a motion, Laurel?
No.
And you're gonna send out the doc that you are going to send? You're gonna send out to us the doc that-
Yeah, I'll, they were waiting, probably not. And then I will create a PEO, you know, everyone. I asked you to respond back, and then for you.
I think so. Oh, that's excellent. Thanks for the stuff last year.
No, where's my gym? No, he'll hit me.
Only Kate.
Yeah, I thought it might be something I want, if you wanna do some cat.
Heather Tippett.
Guess we're moving on to public comment.
I would like to add one comment. I had sent out shortly after our first regular session an invitation you accepted, and it's for each meeting for the year. And then you would add it to your respective digital calendars, so that it will pop up that the meeting's coming up. You're gonna resend it, so please, if you got it, you can ignore it, but if you haven't, then please accept it and add it to your calendar.
Now's where I got a whole list of them. Went through each one, okay.
Because it's just, it seems it's helpful if you have it. Didn't only let it pop up, so you'll have this in the next year.
So the responses were yes, no, and maybe, so if I went in and did maybe for all of them?
Commissioner comments? I'm good. Melinda?
I will be out of town for the March meeting. So I request to be excused.
I will be, too.
But not, we're not together. Unless you're coming to Kansas. Okay. Oh, okay.
Any other comment, commissioners? I have none.
Move to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Laurel. Thank you, Laurel. Yeah, so, Charles, Scott, do you wanna, can we look at catalogs or go online and look at some things, or do you have to get somewhere?
Do you want everybody to forward for your twenty minutes?
Do you have catalogs?
If you think that Will Power had a meeting next week-
You know, online with myself, and it was a double. Well, the side by side. My keep working on, what they said not to do is the double with one for the other.
Yeah, I may well know some of that. And Savin, because Savin, Lake Services, too.
I don't know.
That's a good idea. I can get with them.
Especially kids.
Are you, Jennifer, ready to meet?
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll give the tech.
So that's why, sorry, I just said, I didn't get it in writing, let's just do it.
Still aren't.
I said what?
Your M. lock.
Yep, yeah, yep. Yeah, yeah.
All right, okay, good.
No, not really, but that's originally reflected.
They saw it, and they seen it.
Yeah, it's a director's member, so this one is gifts for education, or directors, speakers, and education staff.
We're gonna miss Tony.
I know. Hey, Rachel, you saw that?
I saved this on the desktop.
It's nice that it's in house.
You know, it really was- We had two fantastic, with Rachel and her.
It's hard to go over.
Yeah, it was very difficult to do. But-
That's a high move. Yep, I'll get there.
Rachel will do a good job, and so will Frank. Frank comes through, and if I were that, true, but-
Dynamic.
Smart. All right, so I am available afternoon on the 14th, but I'm really not sure what time that is, 13?
I'm doing tax on the 14th.
23rd?
On the 14th, I could do afternoon.
Oh, okay.
14 on the afternoon, after 1:00.
Okay, I would definitely be after 1:00. Should we do as late as I believe?
Sammy? Okay, yeah, I did. This is on the agenda.
Do you have that down?
Yeah.
So Old Settlers Park, 3? March 14?
February.
Oh, everywhere. Oh, okay. So 2:14, 3:00. And we're gonna meet here, right? Do what? Have Laurel post that? Well, she asked us, it's about contacting the clerk's office, so I don't know
Oh, okay, okay, maybe that
The other thing is reserved on this
I'll do it. Yes, 3:00, 14th. Bring chocolates?
Yeah.